So I am going to call the meeting to order at 6:04 PM. Welcome, everybody. Welcome back to school, happy second week of school. First, I wanted to welcome Ellen as our official new designee.
Thank you very much.
We're so happy to have you.
Thank you.
She's already doing a fantastic job behind the scenes. Um, okay. I'm done with my John Hancock. All right. So we are going to start with our minutes.
I need some edits.
Okay.
Um, under section four minutes, um, it was actually Bobby who seconded the motion for both the public and non-public minutes.
Just a reminder, speak as loudly as possible, please, if you have a microphone at the table.
Yes. Um, under seven point two, the last sentence, NYAA, third second A has to be capitalized. Um, under section eight point one, it should be Ms. Tassary made a motion to accept blah, 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 and then it was seconded by Bobby. Um, section eight point two, that second paragraph, um, where we received the letter of resignation, I believe should be up under non-public. Since that was discussed in non-public. That's all I have.
I just saw a missing I, Dr. Andrew's name, as I was looking at the last page, eight point two. You inspired me to...
There was one clarification I wanted to make under, um, seven point two, where we talk about, um, Ms. Bishop would like a conversation take place with NYAA, the Connor family, and abiding residents about station. You should use it specifically about insurance, having insurance riders, um, so that since we're using private.
Then I make a motion to pass the public minutes from June seven.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Right. The things are non-public.
Not that I saw.
Nope.
Um, I'll make a motion to pass the non-public minutes from June seventh.
On...
Seconds.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, so we're gonna open up, I should probably done that sooner, thirty minutes, um, for public comments, once, as you guys know. And I'll leave this. Um, okay. So, we're still on the agenda, is business school year twenty-three recap?
Okay, perfect, so over there is your DOE twenty-five, that is your year-end report, um, and hopefully has the signature.
But, um... We've done everything.
Excellent, so at the end of last year, the board had made two motions. One was to draw down on the safety and security trust, the other was to maintain the trust wholly as a means. So we did not touch the maintenance trust, um, because after drawing down on the safety and security trust, and then, um, having several expenses come in less than planned, and some revenue come in more than planned, um, and really the big mob is the trust number they got back in, um, we have about forty-one thousand dollars, it's the number right on there, so, uh, just need to collect the signatures, and then that would be your unassigned balance that would offset the tax rate in November. We don't cut a check to the taxpayers, that just says we have to raise that much less to support, um, the current budget.
How much did we use out of safety?
Um, it was a little over ten thousand.
Okay.
Nothing from the general.
We did not touch the, the maintenance trust. So we made the motion just in case.
Yep.
Um, but, um, we did some great work for safety there.
Well, I just could not find that motion, because I don't have it in front of me, that, that motion to potentially do it just in case is now, we don't have yet. It's not like next week, if it's ever used.
Yeah, nope, we didn't touch it, so it's still in there. Um, and then I also brought the, uh, financials that we had to date so far. Um, we typically come to the boards in October with your current year financial, because we spent the month of September really building the conferences and working with Suzie and her team, um, and ironing it out so that in October, we can come with the first financials typically part of the process, but the month of September is cleaning up the, the effects. So did anyone have any questions? Um, I don't know, Ellen, did you want to talk about the adequacy at this time, or is that a difficult point?
No, that leads right into it.
Alright, it does lead into it.
Okay.
Excellent.
Great, we could talk about it together.
Perfect.
Okay. Do you want me to start?
I can start.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
So, um, so the adequacy formula changed. It's a big, long formula that is hard to understand. But what it did is, the way they changed it, it increased our adequacy amount, and so what the DOE and the state was said is, school boards, if you so choose, could have a public, I mean, public meetings, not here, public meeting to be able to accept and appropriate those funds. So it essentially would add to your current year budget, if you so choose. But if you don't do it, then it offsets it in the tax rate. So your tax rate, what, how your tax rate is set is you have your budget that's set in the spring, the one that we did in the spring of twenty-twenty-three for the twenty-three, twenty-four school, right? Then in the fall, by October one, we set the revenues. So you have several sources of revenue, like earnings on investment, we've seen an increasingly interest rate, so we've seen some, you have your food service sales. You have, um, if you were to rent out the gym, any income that you can get, or rent out your fields, miscellaneous income, that type of stuff. Then what we do is we take the revenue, which is really, really small, minus your budget, and that's what you have to raise in taxes. So what, what, um, adequacy is a source of revenue. So if you were to choose to take it and spend it, the amount in taxes you would have to raise would increase. Rather than getting back.
Does it have to be used, what is, are there stipulations on how it's used, or it just goes through the general fund?
I believe it would just go into the general fund. Because it's just like increasing your bottom line of your appropriation. But, to be correct in my form, I don't think anything has substantially changed with the field since the budget passed. And the budget was based off of need then, and I don't believe it needs to change.
Is this a formula or approach that the, uh, decided on going to be the case for, from your view looking forward, or is it just a long time?
So adequacy does change annually. In the formula, there was a column that said staple or non-stable, and all of ours did say staple, which you can just believe that it is something we're gonna see here over here, but you wouldn't know that until...
But this is the first time the whole cycle keeps...
No, I, this is...
I'm trying to understand it, but...
This is the first time the adequacy formula changed. So, I guess long story short, the state's giving us more money.
Yep.
They're giving us the opportunity to, to appropriate it and spend it, or giving us the opportunity to let it fall to the tax rate.
So I guess what I'm trying to figure out, so if we're getting this money from the state, would that mean that what we're asking the taxpayers is lower, so would it affect the tax rate anyways?
Only if you do nothing. So if you do nothing and let it go to the tax rate, then yes, the tax rate would be lower. But if you choose to spend the money, then we're saying we're gonna spend it, so then...
That increases our budget?
It would increase your budget.
And next year's probably not going to actually increase.
Well, it would, it would increase your budget, and if you don't spend it, then it would go back at the end of the year, or if you do spend it, it wouldn't.
How much money would it take?
Yeah.
Do you have the...
Oh, sorry.
Oh, no, it's not there.
Oh, it's not there, no.
It was, um, I sent out a summary, but I can, um...
Ten to thousand?
Did you put it to us, and I'm just not looking?
No.
No. I didn't see it.
It might have been just small.
I believe it was thirty-three thousand.
That sounds about right.
Yeah.
No, no, it wouldn't be on that. I think it was a summary I'd sent to all the superintendent, so I'm just looking for that summary. That sounds about right, it was probably a small line of twenty or thirty thousand.
You're not talking like...
You're not talking huge dollars, and in order to do it, you have to essentially have an entire election.
Is there like a percentage of voters that have to...
Um, I'm just trying to...
Right, pull it up. And is there, uh, it has to be used by, what do you think it's used by?
It would just be shared currently.
Thirty-three thousand, next year, we can have it in there, and you go back to taxpayers.
So we're going back to taxpayers either way, if we want to.
Correct.
It's thirty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars.
I don't really see any downside to putting it in, because if we don't spend it, if we're not planning on necessarily spending it, it would go back to any...
The taxpayers would have to wait a year, a wait year.
But thirty-three thousand divided by however many taxpayers, like, do we know how much that equates to?
You'd have to do, I could do that.
I only asked, but I saw something for like another district had did something similar, and what their equation was, was like equated to three dollars a year or something for that, or...
Yeah, it's gonna be pretty minimal. I guess, I guess our recommendation would not to take action on it either. We built something, we built the budget based off of need, and we historically only ask the taxpayers for what's needed, and then the, um, Suzie, I'm, well, it hasn't been any substantial changes from this budget, so there's not...
We have a big budget, we're gonna be asking them for it, so... Like, this is more, if we were to accept the money, it's meant, it's intended more for things that are unexpected or catastrophic.
Right.
Things that we had no idea were coming down the...
And that came up by now, or...
Right.
And we already have trust funds for those types of things anyway, so...
Okay, so that is a recommendation, is to do nothing, again, given, how to explain the intention of the money, of the money being utilized.
We want to make the board aware that there is the option, but our recommendation would not to be made utilize it. And by not utilizing that money, it will fall to the tax rate, this is not a bad way. When you already have a relatively smaller fund balance returned anyway, this would help out in a way.
Okay.
Okay, so, are, are, we're looking for a vote on this tonight.
Oh, no, you don't have to say it.
We don't have to, we don't have to do anything.
The only thing would be is if you want to...
If we want to, then we have to do, yeah.
We can do, no action is no action.
You can take a motion to do no action, we don't have to vote.
I guess doesn't anybody want to take action?
No, but my only other, I mean, you brought that, that interesting way of how revenue and, and spend goes. You said there are some ways to raise revenue, this would be one way to raise revenue, is like, you give them this actual thing. Are there other, what other ways do we have to raise revenue?
Um, there's lots of ways, I mean, if you rented out the field, don't that...
We can't, we don't know those.
Okay.
It's okay.
Or if you rent out the gym.
The gym is over.
Is that how typically our districts?
That would be other local, so the cooperatives use a lot of other local revenue, rent out the auditoriums and stuff. Um, there, we get revenue for Medicaid. Uh, we have a projection every year based off of, um, what our special education department tells us. Um, the adequacy is a source of revenue. You could have building aid, if you, if you plan to do an expansion, apply, apply for building aid, that's a source of revenue.
Yeah, it's just helping for you to know what are options after.
Yeah, and, yep, services revenue, so anytime parents pay, that's a revenue.
And we get increased... Cha-ching!
It's coming in, Bobby.
Yeah, so any, any use of the school building that you rented out for, or if you want to have a farmer's market in the hallways on the weekends, like, back to the sports camp now?
Cool.
I don't think we need to vote, we have nothing, but...
I, no, I just, I just wanna make sure nobody wants to do anything, and then we can vote.
I guess, would there be a benefit to having it for an emergency? So like, we had to replace the water heaters not that long ago. Instead of taking that money out of a trust, would it make more sense to have a cushion there in peace, rather than taking it out of the trust?
I would say no, because the whole, out of good faith for us being really cautious with our budget, I, I mean, the whole reason we have the trust funds is for those types of emergencies, so asking them to vote and add money to those every year, I think is a responsible way to do it, but just keeping money just in case now.
I was just wasn't sure, like, if, like, the trusts are getting, like, interest and stuff like that, like, you know what I mean? Like, instead of taking money out of that and then losing money that you're getting interest on versus having the money already, like, at our disposal. That's what I'm asking.
What would that be spread by?
Same as your regular budget. June thirty.
So I guess my question is, is in the next four months, we find out we need something major, like, can we revisit this?
No, so it has to be done, so tax rates started, uh, so the DRA, Department of Revenue, starts setting tax rates beginning of October.
Okay.
So for you to get your November tax rate.
Got it, okay.
Now, historically, I just pulled up your, because if you remember in your board reports that you've got last year, in the bottom corner, it said, how much would we return to taxpayers? So when you return less, that creates an increase in your tax rate, right? So for the twenty-one, twenty-two year, you returned a hundred and thirty-four thousand. Uh, twenty twenty-one, a hundred and ninety-eight thousand. Nineteen twenty, a hundred and thirteen thousand. Um, seventeen eighteen, uh, eighteen nineteen, a hundred and one thousand. This year, you're only returning forty-one. So you're, this would help offset... Yeah, so this would then, yes, exactly, help, help offset that lower return.
The only part that kills me though is that we don't use it, so... So that's why I'm like...
Yeah.
But...
But we'd have to have, literally have an election.
Oh, it has to be voted on, I can't...
Yes.
It has to go into...
Special meeting?
It has to be special, so, so just like how, um, Brentwood and Stradamar, they do the old town status...
Yes, whoever's in the town.
Yes, so you know how you go to the ballot and vote, they have a town meeting, and you essentially do it out to leave the budget. This would have to be the same situation.
Which could be more costly.
Sure.
You'd have to post for it, you'd have to, um, do all of the stuff.
We'd have another meeting, Bobby.
My last questions to the backs are, is there a time sense, like, taking money out of a trust does take some time if you need to, but, right?
No, so, no. All you have to do is, you are the agents to extend on the trust. You would just have to have a publicly posted meeting, and you as a board take a vote with a majority to agree on it. And then we draft a letter to the trustee of trust funds for your town, attach the meeting minutes, and they send it to Jake. It's very easy.
So, I think if we need to, if we needed that money, we'd have to have a meeting either way, and I feel like it's probably best to follow the initiative. I don't think, I don't necessarily vote on it, especially if it's not a free meeting. But I won't vote now, if we, if it's proposed.
Okay. Are you good?
Gosh, it's very... That was a lot, somebody?
I was trying to make it quick.
No, you explained it really well.
Very helpful.
Especially if it comes up again next year.
I wrote down really good notes, so I remember when I ask you again.
Okay.
Um, okay, so, communication survey? Yes, and I was in charge, Holly, you were all set, you wanted to exit.
I'll give you a few.
Okay, thank you. So this is that, um, the Exeter region Cooperative School Board is working on the communication survey for all elementary districts. The next meeting for the, um, communication committee is September fourteenth. And really, the survey is, it is about all of S H sixteen, not just a individual district. Almost like, just to pad up on that, that that's where that stands, and that it's currently in progress. Okay, um, committee reports, um, policy.
So we haven't met, our first meeting is September twenty-fifth, very much in progress. It's, it is, um, I think gonna be a monthly, yeah, on the, third Thursday.
Okay, is there any that you can't, can you go to the one on October? Can we, since we're...
I cannot go to it, October nineteenth.
Do you tentatively want one of us to go to your place?
Yeah, that would be awesome, since we're here, if either of you are pre-October nineteenth, six to seven thirty, it's Zoom, for a person.
I currently have nothing on what's there.
Would you be jazzed without attending, am I said?
Your mind?
Okay, so Jackie, what time is it on that?
Uh, six o'clock.
And you said Zoom?
Um, it, it is a person if you want, or there's a Zoom link that they need to send out as well. Thank you.
For thinking.
Yeah.
Um, superintendent evaluation committee?
So we're actually gonna be meeting monthly, um, going forward. Our first, our next meeting is actually on the fourteenth of September.
Here?
Yep.
It's about the same time. What time is it at?
It's, uh, it's Thursday, only, oh, no, it's not, it's at board. Um, but in our board packs, um, our Esther's goals, um, as a committee, we were actually quite impressed, because I think everything we came to the table with, she already had done. Like, she had even, how are these things gonna be rated? Like, how are we gonna know she's accomplished these goals? So her first main rule is the vision statement, because it has not been updated since twenty-sixteen. Uh, so she's looking to put together, um, a group of community members and stuff to revise the vision statement, um, to make it match more of our graduate, um, that would be a great one for each of them. But, um, I thought it was really well done, um, every, all the things that we had discussed. I felt like she did a great job of pulling into here. Um, and we're gonna meet with her every month to give her feedback on where we think she stands, her piece.
Okay, Miss Collins, was the final, is this final?
Yeah.
Are they publicly available somewhere, or is that not designed to be that way?
I don't really understand that.
I mean, if we could read, I mean, I don't want to speak now, but if they were readable, that's maybe...
Hi. Hi, yeah, I just, I don't know if that's posted on our website, probably already read that.
I can ask at my meeting, and then we can read them that...
Yeah, I don't want to read them.
I think that's something good to bring back to, that maybe, um, I know, because I mean, when we talk about transparency and, um, you know, communication, I think, um, stakeholders understanding what the goals of our administration are is important, and I do, I do think it's a positive statement, so...
All right, I will ask in a minute.
But did you guys have any questions?
So, have I?
No, I don't. Um, all right. You got the fourth time? No. I've got a most.
Yeah.
And you're meeting monthly on the same ti, at the same time of the month, or?
Um, we've got in the schedule, some of them are in person, some of them are first, so we're not always getting them, so...
Okay.
And Esther's not at Embers, so one of them, she's gonna meet quarterly with us. The rest of the time, we'll be discussing our thoughts, work process. Uh, it's one of the things that we will probably be seeing in the coming months, is sort of starting to look at evaluation, her mid-year evaluation.
Is somebody from her office, over in Tennessee, is on her, is Chris, or is it...
Heather.
Oh, so...
Okay, cool. Um, communications and community engagement committee, that's me. Um, we are meeting on the fourteenth, that's why I said it's on the fourteenth. Okay, um, I actually have Esther, um, a week ago now, and we are, what is the name?
Walltrucks.
Walltrucks is the, um, data...
Take a survey?
They're using it for HR stuff, but it also has capability to do surveys that are anonymous, and so we can push it out to stakeholders, because what we found in the past is that the, um, bringing information in has always been a struggle. We can push information out, but bringing, um, it in, it has been a pain point. So communications committee is talking, um, on the fourteenth about how to implement and use and do all the things. Um, so it's already, I mean, it's already been purchased, so that's for something else, so we're just kind of repurposing it for this as well.
Walltrucks is a good, I use that for things, I don't know if it's a world, uh, you and Amy use that for surveys?
Okay.
Like, for research, it's a good, cool.
Yeah, that was, that was my, um, my big push was something anonymous, like, that's actually really anonymous, and it's, it's sort of the third party deciphering all of the data, so nobody internally is, is looking at trends and stuff like that.
Is it gonna be an additional cost to do a press survey then?
No.
No, we'll do straight to the bottom and pull it up.
Yeah. Sorry, no tylenol, I was like, ooh, that's what I want?
I think I should probably add, why I...
Price tag.
We did pay for it, yeah.
We paid for it, but it...
You'll just pay a portion of it.
Yeah, not huge. What we were looking at before was really paying for something.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, the form of, but I think it's good on enrollment, so if anyone has, has...
Is it an annual free, like, a membership?
I believe so.
I believe so, yeah. Yeah, absolutely, and I'll know more after our meeting, um, more details. We, we talked very, Esther's at very high level about it, um, in doing the, and maybe parties of it, um, who wants to meet as a committee first, and, um, but it goes much, um, as the district is working on their strategic plan. Within that strategic plan is communications plan, which is very nicely, you're all out simultaneously, so, um... That's kind of all I've got right now. And then, um, I'm also safety and security, and I, we don't have something on the books, do you believe in that? No. I'm lucky, actually, because I was like, you heard, I didn't, so, um, we're waiting to hear back. I'm assuming it's gonna be October, um, that can speak up on us a decent number on that show. And, uh, okay, so, uh, principal's report.
Sure, well, we are off to a great start. It was, um, amazing to walk the building the first day, she was with us, thank you for being here, this one's Ellen. On our first day, right out the gates, um, it really was amazing, students went right into their classrooms, including our committee members. Um, and honestly, I'll tell them to work, it was a fast transition back. We are starting every morning with morning meetings, which is an outroad of responsive classroom. That's an opportunity for our students to go to community, we understand what a day will be like, share their excitement, their highs and their lows, you know, to do that at the end of the day. And we were excited to bring in some new families, we're currently under twenty-two. Um, and we brought in three new faculty members. Christine Lard is our new, um, three, three, five special education teacher. She's doing a fantastic job already. Ms. Walsh, we're actually in Mrs. Walsh's classroom right now, um, she's our new senior teacher. She has a ton of science, she was doing a science project on the very first day, our first day, the kids loved it. Um, and then Suzie Stahl is our kindergarten parent in our classroom. She actually was a kindergarten and first grade teacher that entire, and now she's with Aurora, and so that expertise has just been a wonderful thing for our kindergarten classroom. Um, and then Catherine Collins is one of our, um, special education professionals. Um, then I shared with you our data, um, what we did prepare that in the spring. Uh, these are our spring results. And they are strong. We will start with science and I think we have Salma on board, because she will be pushing for science. But our, um, math is actually up twenty percent nevertheless, in terms of, um, which is in the SaaS world, great trajectory increase. And then you have arts in person for our hallway. Um, our unified arts went back, reverted to having it once a week, which has once a week. Um, with the exception of meeting, where they have a thirty-minute extra meeting time. The rationale for that is that our four other unified arts teachers, our library, our art, music, and esteem all work with celebrations and learning, whereas K E is really one of the ones that has a harder time fitting. And we value their activity, um, as much as also, so if the students have forty-five-minute P E class on one day, the other day with that, then this year they can have three, uh, so it's twice as much. Purple Skull People is our S E L curriculum that Tracy Hill worked a lot of research on. We're also bringing, um, the second very lovely back to build up our restorative practices, uh, both with our faculty as well as, um, our students. So we're really doing that, um, learn these approach, where our faculty goes through it first and then they deliver it to our students. Um, so every other faculty meeting, where Hillary is actually, um, working for us. If you haven't met her, wish you had time with her, she's fantastic and very fortunate to have her. We're doing our student leadership team again for our fifth graders. We have a fifth grade student come up to me today and tell me he's written a play. He is interested in producing. Um, would you know where my first round of students will be? That's up to Ms. Howard, I know she's, in the meantime, it'll probably be, uh, they'll probably start just the process. I'm not yet to be tracking that.
I know, it's certain third graders talking for an entire year.
The entire third grade is a class.
Exactly what we want. Exactly what we want. We really do want to empower our students to have a voice in what they feel. One of the things that I take some time to talk with students about is the first day of school. And, um, so there's a book titled Silence, no, Quiet. Um, and it's about how introverts need to, how introverts have to navigate through a very extraordinary call. And so it may reflect on how we do the first day of school and how, um, doing this stuff right off of that could be an anxiety provoking, you know, for a lot of students who are, who just wanna know where to go in the morning and reading their spot, especially in our new students. So we're reassessing what that first day looks like. Just like we talked earlier about, as you show, you have to satisfy, of course, we even started for students to use their classroom. We're in public, the extra return party at school no matter what, but we have to think about our constituents and how they invest, navigate those for students. Um, we have worked with Global Labs last year quite extensively. And two of the things that, um, we're gonna focus on this year, that we have a list of ten, that would be overwhelming. So it's always, um, appropriate to chunk them into two or three. The two that we chose both have to do our collaboration with authentic relationships, both for our staff and their students. This year, we have a communications team that consists of myself, uh, the school secretary, the nurse, the counselor, and the home coach. We'll meet every Thursday, so we can talk about, um, communication that needs to go out on front. So, um, we did a survey last year that asked the parents if they're going to have a hard copy or an email. Um, though it was split, some half of the school, parents wanted one side, the other said the other. What we did find is that we heard a lot of, like inbox is full and we get so many emails, so they all know that they can, um, look in the blue folder at the end of the week, know that there's gonna be communication from the communications team and our classroom teacher, um, you know, come to school for emails to get back. We're bringing together that group of people, because those are five of the people who have a pulse on different areas of the school. Um, of course, you know that we've had a change, we've just pushed our instructional time ten minutes later to be ten. Um, the students love having lunch in cafeteria, uh, that's been fantastic. Even though it was a heat wave, when I came in today after recess, like, I think it went up five degrees because, wow. And they smell the heat as well.
So sorry. That was well said.
Um, the library is really a big focus this year, it's not been refreshed in ever. Um, and now that our library is certified, she has really been exposed to so many things, um, that are twenty-first century. Um, and how we can, um, really make our library a super inviting space for our students. So we'll be focusing a lot of M P T O time on that, seeing resources on that. And we're excited. Uh, likewise, um, under the umbrella of library, um, we have two subscriptions that are really making, the breadth of what our students are exposed to exponentially better, just by these two subscriptions. That will allow students to read, uh, nonfiction and fiction, um, at their age level or reading level, um, in an appropriate way. Um, and it sort of allows, um, students to have access to books, uh, twenty-four-seven. So at home, they should never go without a book, because they can pop right onto their account. Of course, we're working at our continuing, our N sixty-eight hours over. Um, our P T O is growing exponentially, which is exciting to see. Uh, we will have a safety, uh, a focus on safety in the month of September, where the students are taught, uh, all these first wordly, do a lot of walkthroughs and drills. Um, Chief is involved in all of our drills. Um, and then we incrementally get them where they can run drills independently. So that will happen through that in the month of September. Um, a huge kudos to Ralph Tompkins, um, and Bob French, uh, for doing a building rate of ready. It looked fantastic. Um, and then I think I was asked to talk both about celebrations of learning schedule and Dare. Um, our celebrations of learning schedule is something that the whole staff is involved in. Um, so getting all of our unified arts team, um, because we don't have them packed today. We have them fragmented throughout the week, getting them onto a document and collaborating with the teachers really takes the month of September.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'd be happy to share that out, if you're not completed with it. The idea is that every classroom, every grade will conduct to one of the hall, one of the screen. And that parents will have those dates, um, so the great parents can come, and people are able to come, get off of work. And so that, um, if you look at the spread of all of our families, not everything is leaving. Either in the month of May or off holiday, it will be spread throughout the year. Thank you. Um, Dare, Chief and I have spoken about potential shifting. Um, Dare just had a baby involved in the last scheduled event, to do Dare, um, starting in January. So that, again, when we look at the thirty-thousand foot view of our calendar, everything's not happening in, in June. Um, students will be able to, our fifth grade students will be able to have Dare from January probably through March, giving us a little bit of leeway time if there's snow days. But then April, um, and May are typically our, um, standardized test time. Though this year, the writing component, um, they, the Department of Education is, is, um, going from having a robot, um, grade the test to actual live humans now. And so the entire state has shifted, um, in March to have their writing, so that there's proper time, um, allotted for the readers to be able to, for the readers to get that out by the end of the school year. So this year, we'll have writing in March, but then math and yoga will be during, um, April and May. And then, of course, our fifth graders go to Alnova, and that will be in May. And then when we catch it, we really try to stop, um, and go, it's intentional, I mean, of course.
Do you think we're still, uh, doing celebrations a couple of days in the morning?
Yeah, and part of the reason for that is student-centered. Um, students are very, very excited when they do a celebration of learning. And to unfold that excitement for an entire day, Dare, they would be exhausted. And so to be able to do the celebration in nine fifteen time, we try to do it with parents, if they are gonna take off the morning, it's pretty close, but not so fast that kids come in and then go right into a celebration. Or the concerts and stuff, so they're in writing. So, uh, that is a conversation that we're having with our unified arts team, where hopefully, to unify the arts, um, the teacher will have some type of effect. So for instance, um, we will continue our football tournament, um, which is a, which was fantastic last year. Um, the arts, oh wait, the art show, there will be an art show and some type of musical, uh, production. Um, and then I'm positive that our senior will have some evening that she's, um, showing off the students' work. Uh, those dates are, are in that celebration of learning schedule, that's all in one umbrella. And that will be distributed as soon as it's published.
Um, I have another question, um, about lunch, because this year milk isn't included. Are there any drink options for the kids who are lactose intolerant, or anyone like that?
Water.
Yeah, but I think it's just their bottle, their. So I, the only reason I'm asking is because that costs a significant amount of lunch cost. So now parents are paying twenty-five cents more, is that behind the costs?
Like the milk, because these would be the difference.
Yeah.
Um, I know that some of that has worked out, that difference with, um, who were in the little family, that also changed. And so the purpose of this church there, um, you still have to, I believe, travel, which is our disturbing, travel extra. To get the milk, that was more local, even the cost, I would have, we would bring it first, so that got offset.
I just know that we increased the cost to offset the food costs, and if we put the milk in, but that cost is very, it would be a good cost, right?
Yeah, we're definitely keeping up, we're tight on, um, what we're operating, what I, and we can show that we're, um, providing the students with nutrition, nutritional meal and stock over sleeping. And so, um, that should be, all that should be covering the cost.
That is a great question.
But it did change.
And we will see those numbers right, regularly like we do, uh, like each month?
Yeah.
So we could, yeah, we could just trend it for some huge difference, but it sounds like it's built in.
So it's gonna be a lot of waste, though? Because I, I'm just, my child won't do the milk. So now we're paying for this milk that he's having to use, so, you know what I mean, like I just, um, because these are separate.
Some people don't eat their broccoli.
Yeah.
Yeah, some don't eat their, I mean, like your person.
Some don't eat any of it.
That's fair.
Okay, you wanna be part?
I will say, and it will be in, um, more than one person, um, in also from this room. Parents have been doing an amazing job of helping food, uh, whether it's coming in for snacks or for lunches, it's really fantastic. So that message definitely.
I don't know what it, it does.
Takes a few months.
Yeah, takes a few months, because it takes a few months for us to get paid, so if you don't see it next month, it's not fair. Um, I know I've asked this before, I just wanted to understand, where is, um, the addition of Miriam? Where is that in, like, how does, she's not?
She's in a professional.
She's, okay, that, that's what I was asking, she's in a professional, okay, okay.
The other question I had, I thought, I also wanna make sure I read, um, the, our staff's new teacher, Ms. Walsh, she is a new teacher, and she's working with? Can you hear her, or did I get stuck?
No. What I, both of them are retired, both of them are retired from Massachusetts.
I'm so sorry, okay.
That's okay, you're good.
This team teacher, this staff teacher, um.
Ms. Walsh.
Mm-hmm, okay, from Massachusetts.
Having Suzie's stuff, yeah.
And is the, um, the pick, the specialized para, is that a new position? No.
We had a vacancy up last year.
We did, right?
That was, so.
Okay, cool. That's why I'm always, we're fully staffed. I knew that. That was me, my way of lobbying it up, attaboy, Suzie, we're fully staffed, yay. Awesome, okay. Um, is any, did you have anything else?
Really happy to see that that's was math teachers, you might, uh, increase to one percent, so that's, hopefully continue to see.
I'm the only one that carries out the L A on this board.
I'm the only one, it's, it's underlying.
No, they all agree. Um, okay, so on to new business, and Molly, I'm glad you stayed, um, because the school impact fees on the agenda.
You do, you are very helpful, it comes to the first.
So actually, something great happened for Impact Bees. So, um, it used to be for any unanticipated revenue, you had to have a public, like, hearing to be able to have to afford, vote, spend any monies received over five thousand dollars. That has been increased to twenty thousand dollars, so you don't have to actually post to have a public, um, hearing. Um, so, yes, we do have Impact Bees. Um, if this could be another way for you to increase any, any project revenue. So Impact Bees, do you typically have an expiration date, like five or seven years? Um, so you can let them sit out there, you can let them sit out there. And then if and when you wanna use them, you'd have to, or we'd have to, well, to do, to accept the Impact Bees. We dropped a letter to the town, uh, and then they would release the funds to us. Now, Impact Bees can only be used for certain things. Is that what we want to be over here?
Yes, well, I already know the secrets, so yes, because we're gonna talk about spending it. So.
Sidewalk projects.
Um, I don't wanna call it sidewalk.
Yeah.
Do you want me to give a brief summary? Yes, I do. Well, okay, so, um, I wanted Molly to explain what Impact Bees are. We kinda talked about it in June.
Oh, so you went over there.
We did, we did.
We're three minutes from June.
So anytime you have, um, new construction, it's, it depends on the town. Some towns have it, some towns don't. If you doesn't bring an extra due, I don't think any other town in this state would have it. So anytime someone wants to build a new construction, or a builder comes in and wants to build a new building, um, the theory is, is there's more people moving to town, so you're gonna need more space in your elementary school. So the burden is placed on the builder to provide Impact Bees. So what the builder does is they pay this pot of money to the town, and it sits there until we can justify a use for it. So it typically has to be expanding footprint of the building or something, so like, for example, a bond payment. You can, you, Impact Bees pay your bond, stuff like that. Or if you needed to build another classroom, because kindergarten exploded in the numbers, like, reduce it for that. You couldn't use it to just redo areas of the school. Unless it, unless it's, there's certain ways to get around it, I guess that you say. So like, for example, um, it all depends on what rules of the town are, and who uses the Impact Bees. Like, for example, Brentwood is. Like for example, Brentwood, as long as it's on the town's capital improvement plan, they can use it at the school. I don't know what Newfield's rules are.
And is ultimate select for that approves usually, or is it the, um?
No.
Look, you said certain.
Oh, approves whether or not it's, we can use it for certain projects.
Well, that's, um, there's not really anyone that approves it. It's supposed to be used for that certain use. Now, if the school doesn't use it before the deadline, it goes back to the builder.
Yes.
So that's why you wanted.
Sorry builders.
So I want to use it, we have given back a lot of money.
Right.
So, um, you would have to use it within the expiration date. I don't have that.
I had it.
Perfect, excellent. Because as I say, Sue, we can probably cover it.
I had exactly done.
Excellent.
The minute.
Times. Yes, and so the guidance that I have always received from forty grammar attorney is to not, so when you do, when you set your revenues, you can put impact fees as a source of revenue if you know it's coming. But if you don't know, or if you don't put it as your planned revenue, then you can accept and extend it when you need. Because once it becomes part of your planned revenue, then it's used to set the tax.
Right. So currently we have nineteen thousand six hundred fifty dollars that needs to be used by December of this year. Nineteen thousand six hundred fifty dollars by the end of this year.
So less than twenty thousand.
We have a total though, bank of fifty two thousand four hundred.
But the rule that Molly just said is that it increases to twenty five thousand dollars or you don't need to.
Right, so we can spend nineteen without.
Without having, uh, even having public carry, it just involves.
Just putting, posting.
And I mean, to be honest, I would still do that just to make actually.
Right, so people have.
That way people know if they're spending their money.
So we, in, um, okay, so in June at our meeting, there was conversation about the crosswalk situation. Chief brought it to our attention that the crosswalk is dangerous. We met over the summer, me, Ellen, chief, all the chiefs in town, a bunch of people from the state.
Department of Transportation.
Department of Transportation. Chris Andruski is heading up the project.
That would be the, my recommendation would be to have Chris take the lead on the project, given that he oversees facilities.
Yes. So we met as a, a team, we walked the property, we, we talked about different, um, options. There are really no, tell me if I'm speaking out of turn for those who are there, but there are really no good options for that entrance. The fire department is there, which we saw on the very first day of school when there was a fire call during pickup. It was okay, but you could see where it could go very bad very quickly. So we walked the property and it was brought up, um, that in the past, there has been talk of the lot over here becoming not just a parking lot, but also an entrance to the, the main entrance to the school. So that buses would come in, I, I don't know how it would look, but the idea is for the buses and, and people to come in that way and either go back out that way or loop around the school. So there's one way, when I point out, so that students and move the crosswalk so that it's over here and not in front of the fire station, in front of the fire station. And those stairs, you go down those stairs and as we all did, we all crouched down, because at the time we were five year olds, you can't see a kid coming from this direction at all. So Rich Kane, um, had recommended from a safety standpoint that we start talking about drawing up plans versus different ideas, um, for this project and that we could, um, if we have plans ready to go, there is some grant funding that we can apply for. So, I mean, I guess the recommendation was that we use part of the impact fees to start getting site plans drawn and things, things of that nature. Because one of the things is that the school has, there's a lot more traffic, there's a lot more traffic just in town, there's a lot more, um, students, there's not a lot of students, but there's a lot of students. So that was, that, that's kind of where the conversation is going. We got a proposal from, um, the engineers on, I need like extra copies. But we can pass this. Regarding all of the surveying and everything that has to be. We do. Yeah, if you, and, um, we also thank you Jane Johnson for being the boss. I knew she'd have it. She has the original plans of what we, um, had proposed a few years ago. When I say a few years ago, like sixteen years ago. So a lot's changed since then, but, um, it's something we wanted to bring to the board and start discussing, um, especially if, if we are allowed to use impact fees for some of this, um, we have, um, a time limit to do that, so.
So one question I would have, is that parking lot is used, right? So anytime any of that happens at school, that's where parents.
We would pay that and pay, it would be a park, it would become an actual parking lot.
How would it be part of the pickup drop off?
They should come in, that would be it, and it would go back around and the parking lot would be in the middle. I don't know if that's, that's what was orig, that was what was proposed years ago. That, that's the whole thing is we need to hire this company to come up with plans, whether that's in one, out, out that way, whether buses have a separate route than, um, you know, then cars. Right now, we're not even handicapped accessible except for you have, uh, a wheelchair, we have to go up the driveway to get in here.
Jane, so, um, for eighteen five, which is what this proposal says, what, we would have all the delineation and updating of the plan or updating of like the maps? Because it's not clear, I didn't hear it thoroughly enough, but would they be able to engineer?
Yeah.
He's going to survey the tax map. Map, tax map, one oh two lot eighty seven, create consistent conditions plan, meeting the town, the site plan, review regulation.
It was my understanding from our initial meeting that he would basically give us a new version of that.
Yeah, so that's, if that's.
Do we know why this never happened?
It didn't get passed?
I don't think it passed that town meeting.
It didn't pass the town.
Oh, it's the same company, so that's actually, they'll have access to.
It was two thousand and six.
It's been quite a, it's been a good number of years.
So I also don't think, and I don't know, I wasn't here in two thousand and six, um, but my, um, assumption would be that it didn't pass, um, it also didn't have this, I don't want to say it down the score, but.
The reinforcement.
The reinforcement from, it's a safety issue. The PD, the fire department, like it's, it's, now it's more of, it's not a nice to have, it's a more, let's do it before something happens, just like a child.
It's a, it's a, it's a safety, it's a.
It's a major safety concern.
And are all folks involved in that meeting, the, the sidewalk and stuff, because some are pretty much in agreement because they're. So that's reassuring, I mean, that sounds good to me, and I think that would.
Well, I think originally there was, there was talk about doing, um, you know, a small island out there, which is just a Band-Aid. Um, so I, I said, why are we talking about Band-Aid fixes? Why aren't we talking about a major change that will last us the longevity of the school and not just, you know, we will spend a hundred thousand dollars on a, a tiny fix versus, I have no idea how much this is going to cost, but, I mean, especially if there's grant money, um, and there is a lot of grant money these days for safety. Um, so if we have plans ready to go.
And the money that is not expired would pay for this.
Yes, the recommendation would be for the board to make a motion to.
Wait, why not?
To spend that impact fee. To have this so that when we, that, that we have this, so when grants come, we can easily apply for them. A lot of times you miss out on grants because you don't have a plan in place, which is what we did years ago for the Vestibule. It was the same concept. We spent, I think, like ten thousand dollars to have a, have a plan. And then as soon as money came up, we applied and had most of it paid for. Um, so then the tax burden is less on the, on the town.
Does this company, time wise, would they be able to go back to us in time?
That's what I understand, yes.
No, I think it's, I was just trying to imagine, that's what I asked. Um, I know that there's some of those outdoor classrooms over there. Is that something that maybe we should make sure that they, like, make sure there's a spot or, because like.
I think in the overall scheme of importance for the safety, we can find other locations for them.
Well, I was just thinking, if we say like, we have a, a spot or classroom, you know what I mean, like, maybe they can make their plan that and not like.
In order to do this, and by this, I mean, you know, create these modified site plans, do we need any, um, coordination or agreement with others, or is only when it comes to doing stuff, we have to have the others to do it?
So from my understanding, that, that's part of this work, is they would work with the others and, and have conversations. No, no, it's fine, it's a lot of.
To get some clarification with regards to what the next steps would be and when, and what it would all entail.
And, um, Chris has been working on this behind the scenes all summer with, um, this company and, um, yeah, so it's. Important.
So we're looking for motions that expend these school impact fees.
Accept it. Accept, right, is that the proper term?
To accept.
Accept.
The school impact.
Accept and expend.
I'm not going to make that one. Your jacket, that's, that's all you're doing.
I make a motion to accept and expend, expend, um, up to the nineteen thousand two hundred fifty dollars as needed for those.
Is that what we're calling it?
Do, do you want this best, uh, company to have this?
I don't think we need this.
All right. I'll second.
Call it a favor?
Aye.
Oh, we need a dance report. It cannot be, no, it can't be.
The annex.
It can't be the crosswalk. Okay.
To the, who does the keeper of keys of all the grants, like who's going to keep all some of our grants?
Um, so Rich Kane is the head, what's his name?
Director of Safety and Security.
Director of Safety and Security, so he is already kind of has, he already has the pulse on it. Um, and like it's, he was at our meeting as well, um, and, yeah.
There were also a couple, or at least one grant that was recommended that we look into last meeting and it was out, and I was able to convey to, for two.
So it's definitely, it, it's, it's very much a coordination between us and the town as well, um, because we want it to make sense for the town. Um, but we did talk about things like parking lot, that's used for other things, it was one of the biggest conversations actually, so, um. That's where, that's where we would park.
And then we do have someone that works at the SAU office who oversees all of the grants. And so that's the official group, Jen Wolf and Jim. Her name's Kathy Cuddy-Ecker.
Thank you for all the coordination, I was like, that was a lot of work.
That was a big group.
Now, does the town know where Cuddy Edmonds is?
Yes, Kobe.
We had a selectman represented there.
Kobe was there. And yeah, like I said, both chief, uh, chief costume was also there from fire department standpoint. There's a lot of guys from the state. They all have various titles, I don't remember.
Was there anybody from the school other than this one?
No.
It was very preliminary. My understanding is that from the June meeting, the recommendation we'll afford was to have us be looking to this from that preliminary standpoint to go to the first aid, and then as we move forward, certainly as soon as we move to the part of the.
Yeah, absolutely, of course. Okay, um, so. Board goals and development for twenty twenty three. So we're going to talk about board goals. And then we're going to talk about like admin stuff, school board meetings, so just so you know, if you don't want to stick around and miss anything, I would be a.
Is there anything else that you need from us?
So sorry, I should have gone first, but no.
Okay, not a problem.
But yeah, I just wanted to let you know what we're going to talk about tomorrow and stuff.
Thank you.
Could be really horrid for you, so. Thank you, guys. Okay. So board goal development for twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year, I thought we, I felt like we, I told Ellen, I'm like, we just did that, and she's like, we did.
But it's, it's.
We're going to change everything.
There's not much, like, I feel like it's like.
You know what I mean?
So I will say this, um, I work a lot on quality and quality improvement at my job and I'm, I'm working right now at this opportunity, point to design our metric goals for next year. And what we did this past year, and we're thinking about doing this next year, is actually keeping a lot of the same goal. I'm not saying that we do that here, but for quality improvement, especially healthcare, you can't really accomplish all of the goals that you want, or at least reach the metric that you want, the threshold that you want to in one year. And then sometimes pivoting your work plan and your focus year after year, year can get easier. And so there's some value potentially in revisiting not picking, you have to necessarily be, that could be able to review. I think, said I haven't read this again, in the fresh on this, so they may not.
Well, I was going to say, I read them and I honestly think of things that are still current, things that we still need to work on.
Well, and I read them and then I read Esther's goals and I thought they went well together, which is kind of what I think they should. I mean, I feel like our goals should be in line with the SAU goals, um, and the school's goals and everybody's goals have similarities. So I also agree, which is probably why I thought we just did it, because I was like.
They're all current to you.
Yeah, so engage in data discussion reports from administration, educational programs is forced to improve learning throughout the year, which I think we all agree, ongoing, which has been.
Cannot look the way that, I mean, I feel like it seems to be going great, but it's not a whole extra lot of work to.
And then the create systems by which the board is gathering information from all stakeholders in Newfield on annual basis. I think this just goes in line with everything we're talking about with the communications committee and the new, um, data, some.
Data, data analysis tool.
Yes, that one, the data analysis tool, but I think that that will be good, where we'll be able to get some feedback from the community as well. So I think these make sense and I don't know if there's anything that we need to add or amend.
You know what, I was just like, going off the communication. With the newsletter from the week, because we have that place where you do the postings, you post anything, that way people can don't recognize the school, they're, they're trusted what word was my on, they can read it, you know what I mean, like just.
On the marketing.
Well, I was thinking, it's right here, like.
Absolutely.
Oh, behind glass.
Just, or even something, something's the community can see, because there's so much that goes on here that I feel like if you don't have a kid, you probably have that missed opportunity. Just an idea, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out as an idea of trying to communicate out with a wider group.
On that note, I, I have recommendation too, because I was looking for a communication from you and then I realized it come from Jane for you. That's one thing that I think parents, when they're trying to figure out from the school, if it's a consistent from, whether it, whether it's you or Jane, as, as far as like, um, the whole school, obviously, that I get, you know, be able to get emails, um, different things from either one of these, but just stern, which one I need?
You don't want Jane's photos?
Well, no, I, no, I don't mind that at all, I just, I was, I can't find this, and then I was like, oh, it came from Jane and not Suzie, but it was from you, via Jane.
Actually, so that, I feel like I can get, especially now that we're in CMS, a lot more things to, which is consistent in a different way, which is helpful. So is that, is that easier to do?
I noticed that too.
They do that at high school too, because I've been getting them like crazy.
I also like, because I just went in and it's on my dashboard.
I know Suzie's been working very hard around communication.
Oh, yeah.
We have the committee.
Just to remind you that in terms of how, like how the communication works. Just to remind you that in terms of how, like how the communication works is specific to Suzie and, you know, and with intervals, it's incredible, certainly we're open to feedback, just to make sure that we're all operating within the purview of the board.
Of course, well, I was, the reason.
I was just throwing out the suggestion, because I was trying to think of like showcasing, right?
Is there ways as a board to utilize those tools? Like when we're, if we wanted to do a survey from the board, like if we wanted to, that would be something we would do with, I would assume, with the help of the SAU slash CD slash whatever. I think that's where I was going with that, is that where does it come from?
It's a good question.
So we're, we're as board, like one of ours is, is gathering information from stakeholders. So if we're going out to like the community, how does that work?
I have a suggestion for how we get more input from our parents, which is the one time where we have the highest amount of students. So one of the best ways to have a computer outside of their classroom, where our parents can do the survey. Before they go into the classroom, because when you send it home, it gets flooded with all the emails that happen. And this is a real game, especially if it's less than two minutes, you know, each other. That's one way of this, as far as the community.
Well, that's it, yeah, that's fine.
Well, the other thing I was going to suggest, and not to put on the two here, but how, remember MLK Day dispatch meeting, we had an intention to have board representation there, and it was open to all community. We can just, there's no reason, I guess, or we can't just plan to have that be a day.
Do a couple of different days.
Couple of different days to run, or at least, at least one, right, so there's one opportunity.
And then have it go out through the town, through the town, soon, soon enough.
Soon again, yeah.
Maybe even host it at the town hall, post office, slaughter.
We would just need to make sure that it works.
Yep.
I just want to add a question to. When we work in front of students, who, who are very successful, we better work in front of them, saying, this is several, this is brands, this is gold, this is money. I guess my question would be, what is it that you're hopeful that the school is doing to communicate out to? What would be success to this board with a relationship between the school and the community? Because I don't know what that goal is, you can't, it would be very hard to accomplish it.
Well, I think that that's kind of where I was going with that is, is to ask the community what, what. You, you said you, you got feedback from the, the parents about how they want to communicate with them. What, how would we as a board go out to the community to find out what they, what's successful in their mind as far as?
I mean, there's no reason why we can't. There's a few spots in town, in that super canyon, we just put flyers up, we change the seasonings up. I think we could just put a flyer like, hi, we're N E S board, please contact us if you have a question, like at the post office. I don't know if that's possible, but I feel like we should be able to do that, that's where there is public experience in town.
Can I make a suggestion?
What I'm hearing is it sounds like you're, you're, we're all, we're all keeping the current goals, and at the same time, you're looking for how, more specifics on how are you measuring these goals? I could get some, I could bring back some more information to the board around, you know, what are options for you to.
That would be wonderful, thank you.
That was a very round robin way of me asking that question, I'm tired of punching, sorry.
That's okay.
But yes, let me get some more information for you. We had lengthy conversations about this last year when we, when we had these, that's where the MLK human to play, and I think we've done some things, but I think we can do better. I think, you know, just videoing this for me has been really huge, so I can say, you should come to a meeting, and if you can't, here's the link. I think it's, I think those are positive in the right direction, but I, I do think we have some more. I don't want to assume that that's what they want, but.
The only thing I would say is some things are probably a bit too specific. So if you're asked, I said, you want about suggestions, I think, you know, we do have, there's, it's post office, it's Susan's board, and the country's. You know, well, I don't know what the, there's like two or three cases in town. So that, I don't think that, I see, we might go.
In general, I can ask a question more generally, and how, how other boards saw and received feedback, because.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're so good.
Okay, so are we, I think, do we want to make a motion to keep our? Whoa, hi.
I'd like to make a motion to keep our current goals in.
Keep our lights on.
Relax, though.
And. To keep the current two goals that we have outlined. Because they're still wrong.
One second. Hi.
Aye.
I'm only about to blank that I could, because, and the motion.
Okay, and then proclamation?
Yes, this was included in the packets, and it's more of a, just a, the opportunity to communicate to you all. The proclamation was issued by the governor, regards to honorate September twenty twenty three as welcoming schools month, with the notion, you know, that we're, you know, understanding the causes and consequences and the means of to prevent bias, bigotry, and all forms of hate in cultivating, welcoming communities that embrace diversity. And it goes on to talk about, you know, more specifics, but in general, that, you know, this is. It is related platform, and we want to make sure that we are communicating it out to folks, so that, so that everyone is aware of, of the population, because it is, it's very meaningful, as I said, very impactful, and, you know, this is certainly in alignment where we are as an SAU and where, you know, where our goals are with regards to the superintendent's goals and in terms of where all of our buildings are, and obviously, you know, we are as an SAU who has the diversity, equity, and justice, that this is very encouraging. We wanted to make mention.
Awesome. I'm all about the board right now.
I just know that I see it, like with the just little like small little posts, like what the heck, right?
I think that would be great, okay, awesome, okay, so old business, our schedule.
So I had requested this to get put on partly because I think in position as a vaccine coach, which the meets are the first Wednesday of the month, starting in October. So I was trying to see if there's possibility that we could possibly change names.
Okay, so I did look, you want me to speak?
Yes, because I, yes.
I did look, I gathered some of this information with regards to the current being that are already in place throughout the SAU, from various boards and committees and whatnot. And so far, the last Tuesday is open, as well as the last Wednesday. Now, I'll caution you that if you look at our school schedule, most often, you know, school vacation weeks and are the last week of the month, so that would be rescheduling, you know, for December, February, and April. That seems like it would not necessarily be the most streamlined solution. Then we also have the last Wednesday, again, it falls into that same issue with regards to holidays and vacation weeks, which are often in the last two weeks of the month, so then there are Thursdays that are open. If the group wanted to consider that day, but the Mondays are taken up by the other two boards and the joint board. So that's the four Mondays are already taken, so the one that was left was the first Monday, who works in this group. So it seems like there's the most flexibility on Thursdays, other than the third Thursday.
Check your what times or with no time mark on, on the first mark, Wednesday mark?
So meets, Monday, Tuesday, over at six, and then a week of bus back to campus. So we really.
Yeah, I just didn't know.
Yeah.
And Tuesdays were out? Tuesdays are the last Tuesdays, okay.
Oh, oh.
You didn't have the conversation, Ellen had the conversation with you all, but you.
The Tuesday?
The last Tuesday.
Oh, okay.
Were you saying Thursdays are open?
Yes, I did say that.
Me, I always, probably, which Thursday are we talking about? Well, one of my Thursdays is the.
Well, policy.
Policy.
Well, the second is the superintendent meeting, the third would be the policy.
So the first Thursday, that's what I was thinking, first Thursday.
At six? And that doesn't count, like?
Not that I, not that I could say, I printed out a calendar, I'm going to check it.
Is that a year long thing?
It goes until April. Actually, it goes technically until.
Mathem?
Oh, yours. I meant our schedule, we always.
Yeah, that was.
The first Thursday looks to be open.
Suzie, does that work?
Does that work? I spotted this, I didn't realize I was going to be asked to be an hour.
No, I'm just. Does it math counts?
Math, math means, so it's.
Is it like math?
So I could go Tuesday to Esther for math team coaching things.
I think the first, for what it's worth, the first Tuesday must be open as well.
That's when I can do, okay, right, that's, it was me.
I think.
Literally, only.
I think it would work, I will have conflicts, you all will have, but like, I always saw it on the tree, but I do not have anything regularly on the first day.
Do you, would late up, like a little bit, like six thirty work?
Six should be fine.
Six thirty nine.
Six would be fine, I won't, I see patients at the five o'clock, and so it's like, you know, fast, 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 but like, you know, I just know that. And I'm moving up a little bit.
Oh, because you're traveling, then, anyway.
But so, yeah, let's, let's do it.
So for our next meeting, October fifth at six P M. That's for me.
Thursdays, it seems, I mean, sorry, November is, but well. We, I've ordered. I'm the worst.
So, so. Ten five.
Let me ask this, if in the worst case scenario, we make this change now, does that lock us in forever? Or always to do it that way, for some reason, James said you hate the job. We can change it as a board, right?
Yeah, we can change this board, absolutely.
Disgusting, I can describe the remark, Jake, oh, that's really great, so.
Okay, yeah, let's.
Things happen. Yeah, no, I mean, I'm, yeah, and yeah, as long as we're, as long as we're discussing any con, yeah.
I don't have to be regular.
Because I know in the past, like, we've had issues around the, like, the deliberative session, we've had to, we've had to change.
Then that is always on a different day.
It is always on a different day.
But we can do that, that's not enough.
That's set back to the date. So we have October fifth, November second, December seventh.
December seventh.
And then January fourth.
Well, December first would be the first Thursday, I know it's not December first and Friday.
Right.
Sorry, my number's so close.
Okay, January fourth.
January fourth.
January first. Thank you. January seventh. Thank you. Four four. Top two.
Well, March is different, right, because of the body.
March, the March meeting would be different because it's a school vacation week. So this is the seventh, the first, the first Thursday, March is the seventh.
Okay, cool.
It's a little bit later, it's not the first.
Isn't, would in Jan, is it January that's?
I think we have time to sort that.
You do have to.
It, it is usually, it's actually February. And then June is six six, so we'll pop you to the minute.
I appreciate it, guys.
Oh, see, that changes, I do, I will see if I can figure out and change this. I think it's a, it's a cycle. Change it to thirty.
If you do one, it should say like, to future.
Okay, does anybody have anything else?
I, I don't want to necessarily do now, but I did make a note to read one of the policies, maybe we can do the next.
Yes, please, I really like having a meeting with no policies.
I agree.
Okay, then I am going to make a motion to adjourn at seven twenty nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.